We'll open this meeting with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Mr. Gerard here?
Just open with a prayer?
Just do it.
Thank you. Lord God, we come before your throne and we are here gathered together with the town council. Lord, I pray that you will give the town council wisdom to counsel. And Lord, I pray that you would instill in each one of us to have patience, hear each other out, and go forward this way. Lord, I also pray for the law enforcement in this town. I pray, Father, for them to get to, that they could work with you, Lord, wisdom. That then, when they stop people, that they, you would show them individually what's in the car and keep them safe, Father. Give them wisdom to read people well, which I believe they do. And Lord, I pray for all those who might have sicknesses. Lord, we just come against the enemy that wants to kill, steal, and destroy. And we bind him in your name, Jesus. And we just declare healing. We speak to their bodies. Whoever may be sick, you know who they are, just declare healing over them. So I thank you, Lord. I pray for our police officers, the police officers and the firefighters. Lord, everyone that is diligent here in town and working hard to make it a better place. Thank you, Lord, that this place is known as the City of the Eagle. It's very prophetic. I thank you, Lord, and I love you. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray this. Amen.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Counselor Burke?
Here.
Counselor Berger?
Here.
Counselor Ian Smith?
Here.
Counselor Kristen Smith?
Here.
Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Counselor Zimmerman?
Here.
Roll call is complete.
Thank you. Welcome everyone here tonight. Really nice crowd and a few people online as well. So I have one announcement, and that is a reminder that the next meeting will be moved from Monday, the 20th, to Tuesday, the 21st for the Martin Luther King holiday. And so you mark your calendars for Tuesday instead of Monday that week. Does anyone else have any announcements? Okay. They will move on to approval of the minutes. I have had the request from Mr. Orr that we approve, address each set of minutes separately so he can have his three minutes of comment on each one. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion when we approve minutes for regular council meetings 1664, 1666, and 1667.
Second. Okay. Do any of you have any comments or corrections for these minutes?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Let's wrap our motion to read these individually.
I stated that, but apparently council has other ideas.
I would disagree with that motion.
Okay.
Yes, this motion is made. It is what it is. On minutes 1664, we reviewed those last time. I wanted to review the comments that Mr. Orr brought into question about Ms. Smith's comments during general comments from the council, and that is almost word for word from the audio. There were only like three words missing, so it does depict the synopsis of the statement.
Any other comments? Okay. I would open the floor for public comments. Any public comments, Mr. Orr?
DCR 1117 Nevada Avenue, Mayor and Council. Which ones are we doing first? 1664. 1664, Counselor I Smith requested to see the substance of what Mr. Orr said. Councilman Berger agreed. I have explained that council has the right to call a point of information. If they don't understand what I say up here in the minimal time that I am allowed, they can stretch the time by asking for a point of information. Then I could explain that the minutes as they were written had to do with Councilman Smith's point of order. What had happened with Councilman Smith's point of order is she calls a point of order under Robert's Rules of Order, which you operate under, under council rules and procedure. She is supposed to state which point she think is being violated. Then the mayor rules on that. What they have been doing is she calls a point of order, the mayor stumbles around, and my three minutes are gone. My three minutes is supposed to stop when she calls a point of order. Sam doesn't stop the clock. So then I don't get to really convey what I want to convey. What that does is it violates my rights, constitutional rights, under Section 2, Article 9 of the Montana Constitution, my right to participate. If you guys operate under Robert's Rules of Order, then I do have a right to participate. The three-minute rule is just a guideline. It is not a rule. Any of you at any time can say, I make a motion that we hear more of what this person has to say, and that goes to a vote in the council. So those minutes as they're written, I think I've explained why I felt like my, I had been, my constitutional rights had been violated in that I want those minutes to reflect that my constitutional rights were violated. Thank you for your time.
Since we have a motion for all three minutes, are there any comments or questions about 1666 and 1667?
I think the minutes accurately reflect the meetings.
Okay. Any other public comments? Any other public comments on these three sets of minutes? Any other comments? Then all in favor of the motion to approve these motion minutes?
Nay.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Nay, nay, two nays. Okay. That is four to two. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Which brings us to the committee reports. City administrative report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council. Good evening. For the sewer department, in the last couple of weeks, we identified that there's a large leaks on the return lines that go from the clarifiers over to the oxidization ditch. We had Mike Fraser down there, a former city engineer. He was in town. And best we can estimate is about 15, 20 years ago, the pipe started leaking. So they did an in-house fix, and what they did was cut a section of eight-inch pipe out and then used actually flex hose, like a vacuum line, put it in on both ends, and just literally they put some duct tape around it and packed cement into it to fix it. So that's, it's a testament to how long it lasts, but now it's given up, so we're going to have to be redoing that. There's also a piece of four-inch that was replaced and just has flex hoes. So we're going to have to do that. So what I'm doing now is creating a parts list. I'm going to estimate the amount of hours required, and I'll get with some contractors, and we'll see how much that's going to cost to fix those. The good thing is, we had Jeff Best and Wayne Cabopple from the Streets Crew go down there. And it can last out for a while, but we'd rather fix it on our time instead of wait for one to blow out and have to fix it on its time. And while we're looking at that, there's two main valves that are no longer operable at all. And then the flow meters have been inoperable for probably 25 years on that. So since we're going to go in there, we're going to try to get the funding. It might be another year or two out to fix the whole pit area down in there. Because we can't forget, we just went through over 125K for the sewer main replacements. We need a backup generator to replace the 47-year-old one that's over 50K. The boiler tank's getting ready to blow. They're putting a new one in tomorrow. That was over $30,000. And just on the air radiator pumps, we went through over 20K in the last six months. So basically, we went through the capital improvement plan money that's been in there for a while, so we're just going to have to set priorities until the second phase of the utility rate increases next year so we can bring in additional funding to fix the rest. For the water department, we did hire a new water distribution operator. I still got light in his eyes. He's not all twisted and jaded like the rest of us already, so he's going to do good. And I'd like to thank John Hibbs. He left on good terms, and actually, we were able to call him. And he's willing to come in on his own time to help out still. And I just wanted to say thanks to him because it shows what kind of man he is. For December, we did not have a meter reader, and with all the equipment breaking down, we didn't get a chance to go out and read the meter. So what we did, we did an estimated bill. So basically, they transferred over the usage from last month into the current month for December's bill. So the bills were going to be identical as they were going out. So what happens is now they're out there reading it now. He's been here three weeks, and he's reading them now. When they download it, basically, the meter starts from November. We estimate December and then January when it's read. If you use more than the estimate, it still will just bill up to what the new current reading is. If you use less, it'll just read up right to that current reading. So if you paid for 2,000 gallons and only used 1,800, that 200 gallons will be credited on to that next bill. The reason we do that is because if we don't do an estimated bill, people can get two to three months of usage in one shot, and that can really affect their budgets. So that's what we did an estimate for. I know there's been a couple of water leaks were identified, and those people have called us up because their estimate was really high, and we're just taking care of them individually upfront. So if anybody asks, just have them call us up, we'll be able to explain their bill and what's going on. Another news, Sherry Turner with the Tourism Grant Projects. That's the Shea Locomotive over here. She submitted the final grant application to Department of Commerce and got very strong feedback. We're looking at being able to do 14 of the 23 funded projects in the first year alone. Three projects were not funded, but what's going to happen is the projects can go after some more grant funding to try to get those other three projects funded. Our project, which would be rebuilding the safety rails, guardrails on the old hall bridge, it looks like that's going to be done in the second year, which will be June 26 to June of 27. And that's estimated at just over $125,000 to complete that. I do have a list of all the projects and what's approved and what's not approved right now. If anybody'd like to see it, just stop by the office, and I'll be able to go through them with you at that time. Some of the bigger things we're still working on would be the cooking grease being introduced in the sewer plant. We believe we have it under control now. It's almost out. So that's cleaned up, but we still have to go through with finishing up the new regulations to try to control it to make sure that the public out there, restaurants are cleaning out their traps. We're still updating the open cut mining permit. And right now, we're also starting to planning. Our SLIPA grant was all approved and submitted for Spruce Street over here. But now we're trying to set up the pan and find the funding for the rest of the road so we can connect it into the framework. And that's my report, Madam Mayor, Council.
Okay. Any questions, comments for Mr. Sykes? Okay. Move on to the fire report.
Yes. Libby Volunteer Fire Department responded to nine calls in the month of December 2024. Two calls were in the city, five calls were in the rural fire district, two calls were outside of the city and rural fire district. Two structures, two chimney fires, three mutual aid with Libby ambulance, one false alarm, and one miscellaneous dumpster fire. That put them at a total of 87 calls for the year of 2024. And then on the 2024 annual fire report, like I said, the total of 87 calls. Average turnout dispatched to en route Engine 9 was 5 minutes 53 seconds. Average response time dispatched to arrive on scene, all apparatus, 10 minutes and 3 seconds. He does have kind of a breakout there. City was 5.32 minutes, rural 10.62, out of the district 14.71 minutes. Average time spent on scene, arrive on scene to clear was 43 minutes and 57 seconds. Average personnel responding to all calls was 15.7 members. Total training hours for all members in 2024 was 2,738. Time spent on incidents, 634.19 hours. Incident and training time equaled out to 3,373 hours. And if we were paying for it at $30 per hour, that means that the Libby Volunteer Fire Department donated a total of $101,190 to Libby. That's my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner? Do you have a breakdown of the annual fire county versus city?
They're all on here, yes.
Did you take one after another? 87 total calls?
City is... Excuse me. 31 city, 47 county, and nine out of the district.
Thanks, sir.
You betcha.
I'm going to back up. Mr. Williams, do you have a street supervisor's report? Forgot to tag on him on to the city administrator. No chance.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. So obviously, this time of year, things slow down a little bit for us. We're still continuing on with our jetties in the sewer mains, patching potholes. I've been doing a lot of work in the shop, making repairs to equipment. That has been, well, we got old equipment, so we're just trying to get caught up on getting repaired for springtime. So we've been cutting out a lot of rust and deteriorated areas, fabricating up new pieces and welding it in place and painting. Like Sam said, we interviewed four individuals, replaced that water distribution meter guy. He's doing a great job. He's not getting stymied. He's taking his time. He's observing his own mistakes that he's making along the routes, and he's making those corrections. I'm a firm believer in that, learning from your own mistakes. You don't browbeat him. You know, you just let him go. He's doing a great job. That new carrier unit that was purchased was last summer, the carrier for the jetter unit. We finally got that in play. It was a long process, working through a lot of kinks with the existing. It was all just a timing deal. It took us just short, a short two weeks to get it off of the old truck on the new one. And it's working flawlessly, rebuild a couple valves. And it's just, I don't know, it's a big, big time improvement. So guys will love that. I still have one employee still on medical. He had surgery a while back, and he's still on that, but I spoke to him this evening. He's on the band, doing his physical therapy, and I just hope to have it back here in the next handful of weeks. Last three weeks, we had the freeze and rain. That's kind of the onset. We've been trying to stay on top of it, monitor, get out of bed throughout the evening, monitoring two or three different forecasts, trying to stay on top of it with the, you know, this little bit of the snowfall we've had here lately. We had one commercial water service line replacement, two-inch pure core curbs off of meter pits. That's now up to the current city standards. We had one water main repair, two-inch galvanized main with roughly an eighth-inch hole. We had some tree cleanup on City Service Road and back by waste park treatment plants. We had some old cottonwood just deteriorated over time. Wind got them, and we just went about cleaning that up. And the first day in Montana was a station of surprise, is just kind of giving us a little grief. It seems to be about like a six to eight week evolution of, you know, what's being contributed into our veins. It likes to collect and then start causing problems, and it's back up and tear apart and start over. So just been one of those deals. Been busy in the shop, trying to get ready for spring. Any questions?
Thank you.
Police.
Mayor, City Council. So I prepared my annual report for July 24 for you. Before I get into that, I have two things I kind of want to touch on real fast. We had a couple of incidents this weekend, caused quite a bit of vandalism damage to the elementary school football field, the front park, as well as next to the cemetery and in front of the Legion Field where people were burning out and spinning around in their vehicles on the grass there, tearing up immense amount of property. So we're hoping for the public, any help we can get to figure out who these people are so that we can deter this from continuing. Obviously, it creates a bunch of work for the school district, for the Legion Field, as well as for our city crews. We don't want to add any more to that. It's just not appropriate behavior. The other part, I just had and I lost it.
You're too young for that.
I know. I know. There's been a lot of talk about stop signs on social media and throughout the town. Stop signs are new. We understand that. And it's been a growing concern from officers as well as many people in the community. People are just not stopping at them, and it's creating a, quite a hazardous situation for a lot of people. So we want to remind everyone to make sure they're paying attention as they drive. It's always our responsibility to know what's going on around us while we drive. Things are constantly changing. Just because something's new doesn't mean we don't have to follow the rules. So please make sure everybody's paying attention while we're driving and come to complete stops at all stop signs and stoplights throughout town. This will help keep everybody safe, keep property safe, and obviously creates that safe environment that we are striving for here in the city. All right. So in 2024, our officers investigated 2,202 cases throughout the year. In 2023, officers investigated 1,439 cases. As far as incident responses, department managed a wide range of incidents from disturbances that investigations and crash responses, crashes pardon, being the most common. We investigated 100 deaths, 39 assaults, 67 threatening cases, 98 disturbances, 35 citizen disputes, 27 disorderly conduct cases, 34 cases of criminal mischief, seven domestic violence cases, 105 crashes, and 105 calls to 911 that weren't able to be classified. A lot of those are being POC dialed, things like that, but officers still go out and check on this to make sure everything's safe. Community engagement wise, we made a large emphasis on placing city for school zones, providing assistance to residents in need, ensuring collaborative approach of public safety. Each officer demonstrated dedication by handling a variety of cases, including school juvenile related calls and incidents involving mental health, along with possible population. They did over 94 walkthroughs through businesses and buildings throughout the city, 59 cases involving juveniles, 237 public assist or welfare checks, and 56 cases involving mental health. Department responded promptly to emergency, emerging challenges while maintaining constant enforcement and educational initiatives throughout the year, resulting in 474 traffic stops, 213 suspicious acts investigated, 74 city ordinances investigated, and 32 drug or alcohol cases investigated. In 2024, the Libby Police Department received $105,559 in grants. This paid for a new patrol car, including all the critical equipment required, which will allow us to have a fair, fully functioning patrol. Funds were also used in the construction of new classroom slash shed, for our fire range, as well as steel targets, allowing officers to continue training more and more. The department has also partnered with SHIELD 616, a nonprofit organization that helped raise funds to buy body armor for officers. SHIELD 616 received funds from many of our local residents, including businesses and churches, to help keep our officers safe. Following our efforts, a member of the nonprofit's board personally covered the rest of the funds that we weren't able to raise ourselves. Between our true support of community and the SHIELD 616, a total of $15,810 were raised to purchase body, rifle-raided body armor for each of our officers. The apartment building itself has been entrusted to us by the city. Our team has worked tirelessly to clean, paint, and repair our historic building. We're so grateful for all those who volunteered their time and energy in helping with us in that regard. We've been very fortunate, our volunteer cleaning staff that we do, staff's effort of helping maintain our building, help foster a professional environment for our officers to work in. We officially completed remodeling the entire interior of the building, including our own interview room, as well as an evidence prep room, which was paid for by the Lincoln County DUI Task Force. Our officers were thrilled to have been involved in our community. We love the opportunities that we have been given to participate in multiple parades throughout the year, the elementary school water fight, the Mineral Avenue Halloween event, the turkey drive in partnership with Water Patrol, and without a doubt, our favorite Shop with Con. We're actively looking and excited to find what and what activities we can join in this year to be part of our community. We're grateful the council's support, and we're always striving to become better as our officers and citizens. Thank you so very much. Any questions?
Thank you. So there's no ordinance report. Brian, do you have any update on the pedestrian flags?
No. I talked with Justin and still waiting to hear back after the holidays from Jeff at Twisted Turtle.
Okay. No building report, no water sewer, no zoning. Parks are on the agenda. No finance, see, wildlife?
Madam Mayor, Council. We have a new biologist for the Libby area. We're meeting with him tomorrow. They will continue the CWD harvest of animals this season again. We're also working in some other options with our turkeys with him. Better update at the next meeting after I visit with him tomorrow. He's also looking for possible locations inside the city limits to put traps for the deer for CWD, if there's anyone interested in letting us use their property for that. Please either reach out to myself or Mr. Sykes, who can email again, get the list of the biologist and see what we can make out.
Thank you. City County Health Board, I know Tony is here, and he wanted to introduce the new... I couldn't find you out there, Tony. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. The Parks District, sorry.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Tony Petrucci, 559 Florence Road. This is an interim report. I'll get you my year-end report later. We've been working on grants and trying to get some deadlines going, so we've got that squared away. We're working with you on a future list for NRDP projects. We'll get some communication going on that. We did get approval for our NRDP payment for our Libby Park District Recreation Manager. And I'd like to introduce to him, you to him right now. Adam Noble, stand up, please. Adam's our new hire, so he'll be working and he's going to take my job one of these days. So other than that, I'd just like to report. Turner Mountain's open, so we had 560 skiers this weekend, so that's good. Any questions on that?
Okay. That brings us on to the public comments on items not on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to make comments on items that are not on the agenda but are under the jurisdiction of the city council. I'll remind you that the public comments are limited to three minutes, and this is not a question and answer period. This is just for you to make comments to the council. So I'll open the floor to public comments. Who's, who would like to make a public comment? Mr. Orr?
Madam Mayor and Council, DCR 1117 Nevada Avenue. The local government review commission has been at it for about two months now. And we are a commission that is funded by the city. Thus, we are a committee of the city. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a request that I be put on the agenda to explain to council what we are doing. And at that time, an action item would be that we be put on the list of committees that give reports every meeting. That's well within your purview. That is something that is very important because it was elected by the people that you claim to serve. So that means that every couple of weeks, we could give you a report on where we're going. going. One of the things we're doing is reviewing your charter, your charter where it spills out how you operate under Robert's Rules of Order, and how you can make motions to do this, that, and the other thing, and avoid offending the public. You can actually do the work that the people have requested that you do. Some of the other things that we're doing are very important, kind of fun. We have a great form of government in place. We will be making recommendations. I expect to tweak some things and mix some things up and empower you guys to actually do some of the work yourselves. Councilman Taylor is the ex-officio member, and he's a wealth of information. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Mr. Backen?
Ms. Mayor, Council, Vince Backen, 427 Thomas Street. Just two little items here. One is that we did a little interview with Mr. Beebe, and we'd like to know if we can get Mr. Beebe put on the Government Review Commission. It's been about, it's been over 30 days. So if that would be possible to get that third person on there so we can carry on with our duties. And the second thing is that, I brought it up last time, is I think we should pay the mayor for all of the mayor's hard work. And I did some research in small towns of Libby, Montana, Libby being one of the small towns, and like Stevens and I'll just give you one thing, so they got 2,200 people. They just reduced the mayor's salary down to 24,000 a year. They dropped it because of lack of rates or lack of work that she had to do. But I would like the council to bring it up on the agenda. Let's look at, you know, Libby is growing, your time is valuable, and if the mayor gets paid, maybe the mayor will feel a lot more empowered to do more, and I think Libby deserves being mayor.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Mr. Beebe?
John Beebe, 704 East 9th. I usually am up here kicking and making trouble, and I just wanted to come up here and thank you all for your hard work. Not everything is perfect, and improvements can always be made, but I want to take the time to thank you all for your due diligence and your participation in your community. We're all friends and neighbors, and it's nice to have diligent members of the council and mayor, and all of the workers and our first responders. These guys are doing a good job. They should be recognized for that. And the city workers, the worker bees that are taking care of our water and our sewer and our streets, these guys do a good job. I think they deserve recognition, and with due regard for the commission, if you feel I'm a good one for it, that'd be great. I'm more than happy to help my community in a civic manner. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Public comments? Okay, then we will move on to our agenda. There's no new business, no old business, so we'll move on to the new business. And first up is Sydney Stewart from the State Asbestos Resource Damage Grant Program. And her coworker, Brian, and I'm sorry, I don't have your last name.
Brian in Barstow, Yack with the Natural Resource Damage Program. I have a hard time with it as well.
Thank you for being so gracious.
1720 Ninth Avenue in Helena. Mayor Williams, City Council members, first of all, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to have us up here and give us some time on your agenda. I'll only be taking a little bit of time talking about who our program is and what we do, and I'll turn it over to Sydney, who's the project manager for Libby.
Get closer, get closer.
Well, while we're getting that up, our contact info is up here, and Sydney has a handout that has our contact info on it. I would encourage you and members of the public, if you do have questions, feel free to reach out to us about anything. Do next slide, or do I?
The end is bringing the clicker over.
Thank you.
You get to be the first person to use our new system, so.
Oh, wow. Seems to be working.
We'll see.
So we are the Natural Resource Damage Program. We are a very small program, 12 employees in Helena. We were started in 1990 to pursue damages from historic mining in the Upper Clarkport Basin and the Butte, Anaconde, Deer Lodge areas. We do work on behalf of the governor, who is the trustee for natural resources in the state of Montana, and we work under a few different laws. There's CIRCLA, which is the Federal Superfund Law, SEGRA, which is the State Superfund Law, the Oil Pollution Act, which applies to oil spills, and what we do is we recover damages, the injuries caused by the release of a hazardous substance, and then use those damages to restore, replace, or acquire the equivalent of the injured resources. As I said, we are a very small program in a very large state. We have the 2015 oil spill outside of Glendive all the way up to Libby here. So one of the things that we would request of the council and the community is we need your help. We need your help identifying projects, we need your help implementing projects, we need your help trying to get the word out about what we're doing and how best to communicate to the public. Most of my work has been in the Upper Clarkport Basin, working with the communities of Butte, Anaconde, and Deer Lodge, and over that time, we've developed very good working relationships with the city and the council and counties, and we hope to do the same up here. So what we are and what we're not, we deal with restoration. Remediation is protection of public health and the environment, and that is what is led by EPA and DEQ. What we do is we're part of that, but we're on the restoration side of things. We only look at restoring and replacing injured natural resources, again, caused by the release of a hazardous substance. That leads me to what are natural resources? Anything held in public trust, so land, water, fish, and then the services provided by those resources. So for example, fish would be a resource. Fishing, the recreation of fishing for those fish would be a service. Another example would be groundwater. Groundwater would be the resource, the use of that groundwater for drinking would be a service. Injury is a measurable effect. So an easy example is you have fish in a river, there's a release of hazardous substance, there's no fish. Very easy to identify and quantify. Same with groundwater. You have 500 acre feet of good, clean, usable groundwater, there's a release of a hazardous substance, you can't use it, very easy to quantify. Damage is just some money that either come through for a settlement or a claim, used to replace or restore those resources. The damages must be used to restore, replace, rehabilitate, or acquire the equivalent of the injured resources or services they provide. So we can't take our groundwater claim and apply it to building an arena or building a movie theater or something like that. It has to be to restore, replace the resources. Some people like thinking graphically. This might help you understand what we do. So on the Y-axis of the vertical axis, you have a resource, whether it's fish or groundwater, again. X-axis is time, there's a release of a hazardous substance, that resource gets degraded, there's a cleanup by EPA and DEQ that restores it to a little bit but doesn't get it back to what it was. And so let me try the pointer, maybe.
The little red.
Little red?
Yep.
So this area, both from where it was before the release to where it's cleaned up to, and the time it takes for the cleanup is what we claim as damages, and we claim that on behalf of the state of Montana. And with that, I get to turn it over to Sydney. Again, we will have time for questions at the end, and again, thanks for giving us this opportunity.
Okay, Sydney Stewart, also 1729th Avenue in Helena. So I'm an environmental scientist, and I'm NRDP's project manager for our work in Libby. I just want to mention that we are also working on Libby groundwater, but we're talking about Libby asbestos today. So if you have questions about Libby groundwater and also the contact, but Libby asbestos. So I'm sure many of you are familiar with Libby asbestos. There are multiple operable units. The claim, the settlement that we received was for operable unit 3, which is the mine site, and anywhere that contamination from the mine has come to be located. So that includes the mine site itself, the forested areas around the mine, and then the Cootney River downstream. The official boundary hasn't been defined yet, but it will be in the feasibility study that EPA and W.R. Grace are working on right now. The pink outline here is the general area that we're looking at. So the state settled with W.R. Grace in their bankruptcy in 2023, and that settled the remainder of the state's claim in W.R. Grace's bankruptcy. There are many pieces to the settlement agreement. What I'm talking about is just one piece of it, and it's 18 and a half million dollars for natural resource damages. So the cleanup was handled by DEQ, as Brian talked about, that's a separate part of the settlement. The natural resource damages will receive a total of 18 and a half million dollars over 10 years. We've received about 7 million to date, and we'll receive another 1 and a half million plus interest on the remaining balance every April until 2032. Because we're receiving this money over 10 years, and because the final cleanup plan for the mine site isn't determined yet, we've produced an interim restoration plan that'll govern how we use this money until we know what the final cleanup looks like. So as Brian talked about, remediation and restoration are different, but they're also, they're related. The remediation can help bring those natural resources back to their baseline, but usually not all the way. So we want to see what the cleanup plan looks like so that we know the final state of those resources and how we can best restore them. The interim restoration plan talks about the injuries to natural resources. So because this was a bankruptcy, we didn't do a full assessment like we might have done at another site, but what we did do is look at existing data that was collected as part of the superfund process, and we saw injury, potential injuries to the natural resources and services that are listed on this slide. So just a summary of the Libby asbestos restoration fund right now. We've received about 7.1 million dollars so far. 2.1 million of that was used to repay past costs that were incurred during the settlement negotiations. 2 million dollars have been allocated to early restoration, and I'm going to talk about that in a couple of slides. And then 3 million dollars is being reserved for when we know what the cleanup looks like or for future early restoration projects. That 3 million dollars is also where NRDP's expenses come from, so mine and Brian's time coming up here and talking to you guys, as well as writing this interim restoration plan. We've spent $36,000 to date in NRDP expenses, most of that was writing the plan and reaching out to the public. So as I said, 2 million dollars was allocated to early restoration projects. We're interested in early restoration because it can help us restore the resources while we're waiting for that final restoration plan. For example, if the fish population is injured and you can do some projects on tributaries, that fish population can start to recover, even if we can't do all of the work at once. So it reduces that overall time to recovery. What's listed on this slide are the requirements for early restoration projects. The first one is restore, replace, rehabilitate, or acquire the equivalent of the injured natural resources. So that's the mission of our program. All the money we spend has to be in that, for that goal. For this particular settlement agreement, all projects have to be located within Lincoln County. We can't do anything that's going to interfere with any of the potential remedial actions in operable unit 3, and we don't want to put something in that might be torn out later because of remedial actions in operable unit 3. For early restoration, we want projects that are time critical. All that means is that there is value to doing the project now rather than waiting to do it when we write the final restoration plan. And then they have to be able to be completed with the funding available. So back in the fall of 2023, we were up in Libby, we had a public meeting, and we asked the public for project ideas for early restoration. We received eight project proposals, and we selected seven for funding. So this is a summary of the projects. Just really briefly, we have three aquatic projects, so looking at putting a fish screen on a ditch on Parmenter Creek and evaluating the efficiency of that creek to see if we can get laces and water savings, looking at the feasibility of doing some restoration work on Libby Creek, and then developing additional raceways for red-banded trout rootstock development. And then we have four recreational projects, so funding the county to write a Cootney River Recreation Management Plan, also the county improving the Norgard Trailhead and connecting that trailhead to DNRC land, and then funding the Lincoln County Park Manager and working with the city on investigation into removal of the Flower Creek waste gravel pile. So Brian talked about some reasons why we're here. One of them is that in the interim restoration plan, we've decided that every three years we're going to evaluate the need for additional early restoration projects. So that means we'll be back up here asking people for project ideas. So we wanted to come and present and get people thinking about this sooner rather than later. Yeah, so that'll be a scoping period, and then we'll go through the projects, evaluate them according to our criteria, and whatever is selected will go into an addendum for the interim restoration plan. All decisions around funding for this money are up to the governor, so I can't personally make any promises, but what we're thinking is that about half of the money available at the time will be used for early restoration. So in 2026, 2027, we'll have between 10 and 12 million dollars in the fund. We anticipate spending 5 to 6 million on early restoration projects. And that's all I have. We have some links here to our website. As Brian said, I also have some handouts with all of the information that's on this slide, so if anyone wants our contact info or these links, come and find me and I'll give you one. If anyone can take some questions.
Okay, I will open it up for public comments. Anyone have a public comment regarding this plan? Mr. Orr?
Sure.
I thought you were raising your hand when you went to.
Oh, I'm not pushing my glasses up on my head. You know me, I'll always step up to the microphone. I've got your contact information, and I will be contacting you specifically about the Flower Creek waste gravel pile. That is an issue that has just bestered here for years. Removal of that pile was actually a condition of the contract, and no one will admit why the contractor got away with not removing that pile. No one will investigate it, no one will do anything about it except look to other agencies to fund. You'll hear.
Any other public comment? Mr. Petrucci?
If I could just do it from here. I'd like a little more definition of what's a resource. Is it a fish, or is it a land, or is it a service provided by the trail? What's a resource?
If you want to step to the podium to answer that question, please.
I'll just go back to, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, we took it down. I'm very sorry.
It's.
Wait, do you need it back up?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, we can bring it back up.
So the resources and services are defined in CIRCLA law, so I'd have you to send that to you or put it up somewhere where it's easy to find. But yeah, generally, we're talking about resources that are held in trust for the public, and then the services, I think, I don't know if there's a better, I think fish are resources. We do a lot of work about fish. We also do a lot of work for habitat, and that's like in-stream habitat, aquatic habitat, but also riparian and terrestrial habitat, and then general resources. And then general resources, groundwater, birds.
So Brian, again, with the natural resource damage program. As I said, it's anything held in public trust. So land, water, fish, again, wildlife, trees, biota, air, groundwater, anything that is, is kind of a public trust. And then the services are just, you know, the, the, what you get out of that. So if it's, so if it's a tree, it's, it's your, it's your walk in the woods. It's your viewing of wildlife. It's your being surrounded by nature. The recreation that you do in those, in those resources. Does that help? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? Any other public comments? Okay, if there are no other public comments, thank you very much for coming by. I appreciate very much the information and that you've made the trip to Libby to, to start trying to work on future, future grant requests and stuff. Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
And so that will, brings us to the, approved the committee's recommendation on the skateboard placement.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. The committee met on the first and talked about placement for... Skate park's a big word. It's, it's a mini ramp, just so everybody understands. It's not a massive park, but an eighteen by twenty-five foot mini ramp. And we looked at many different locations. And Fireman's Park near the cemetery seems to be the best placement that we decided on. There's access to parking. It's already got barriers around it. And there'll be access for a street light. So the committee recommends Fireman's Park for the placement.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was trying to ask Mr. Chisholm to unmute if he needs to speak at any time during the meeting. And the mouse wasn't enabled during the presentation. So the recommendation is to put the mini skate park at Fireman's Park. Is there a motion to that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Fireman's Park location for the mini ramp.
I'll second.
Okay, any council comments, questions, or discussion?
Great job coming together.
Okay, then I would open it to public comment regarding the state, the placement of that skateboard element at Fireman's Park. Any public comments regarding the location for that? Ms. Nelson?
Jennifer Nelson, Ten Twenty-Six Washington. I would like the council to consider this placement very well. I do support the skate park. But I've tried to educate myself on this and to, to qualify my statements. I did miss the first meeting, so I don't know where this was first proposed. But so far, I have had difficulty finding information on the design, the dimensions, I did hear them tonight, the placement. We have a map, the upkeep, the costs, who's responsible for what. There's no conceptualization that I am aware of that has been provided to the public. I'm not sure what the expectations are. I, I would like to understand, you know, I understand that this is a grant from law, but what is the cost that could be incurred by the city for, for replacement of this park in an already established park where we have water systems and lawns? Also, the map does talk about expansion, and I think that needs to be discussed. And are there rules? Is there fencing? Just a quick look at skate parks. And this, I understand this is a half-pipe and it's just a, a small scale thing, but you do talk about expansion. Alberton Montana, or Montana Skate Park is seven thousand square feet. Darby's is ten thousand square feet. Stevensville's is eleven thousand square feet. Woodland Park is twelve thousand square feet. So I think that, you know, that it's important for the public to understand the scope of what is being proposed here. And I think there is a question of appropriateness in the site. It is next to our cemetery. And we already had discussion about the funeral home, which unfortunately both these parks are, are near sacred areas. And it's also adjacent to a city campground in a park that is supposed to be dawn to dusk as far as operations. So there is little room to grow. The cabana use is high throughout that park for reunions, dinners, parties, birthday parties. We already have a parking issue. And the other thing about the placement being involved with trees in my career and this is that there's tree debris.
That was your three.
Okay. I think you need to consider the tree debris.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments regarding the placement of the skateboard park in Fireman's Park? Mr. Feeney?
As you committee members know, I share the concerns that Jennifer raised and fully support the skate park. If we're going to proceed, we're proceeding halfway. We need to further, we need to facilitate this in one hand. However, we need to fully explore it on the other hand. I don't believe in committee that it was explored fully. That's, you know, my opinion. I, I believe our committees need rules that would explicitly state to what extent we need to explore these issues prior to a recommendation. As I understand it, there are no committee rules, which is in conflict with normal legislative process, which means that people aren't getting due legislative process. I have suggested that we get a rules committee and get our rules in order for our committees. That wasn't reflected in the meeting minutes per statute requirements, be it oversight or omission, whatever. It wasn't in the meeting minutes and you guys all voted for them. And with due regard for accountability and transparency, we should record these meetings to get a good record and keep a record for accountability to the people. And we need to get our legislative process in order. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Yes. I'm sorry, I don't know your name. So state your name and, and address, please.
I'm Jared Phoenix, five three seven five U.S. ninety-three. I'm speaking as vice president of Big Feelings, a nonprofit involved in spearheading the Libby Ramp Project, but also as an individual whose young life was negatively impacted by, by the removal of Libby's original skate park. Because of that, I do take this project somewhat personally. I don't just want to see this project done. I want to see it done right so that it can be enjoyed by people of all ages for many decades to come. I ask that the city council members please take the following three points into consideration when approving a location. I've visited dozens of skate parks all over the Western U.S. over the past twenty-five years, and these are things that I have found to be crucial to having a fun, clean, and safe skate park. Number one is the surrounding landscape. A skate park is best surrounded by grass or pavement. Dirt and gravel surroundings lead to mud and rocks being tracked into the skate park, which is not only hard on equipment, but also makes for unsafe riding conditions. A small pebble can stop a wheel, possibly resulting in injury. Number two is a centralized accessible location. It's fairly safe to say that this park feature will be mostly used by a younger demographic. Therefore, it should be centrally located in town and be accessible by bicycle, scooter, roller skates, or skateboard. While some visitors may access the park by a motor vehicle, adequate parking is not the problematic issue that some concerned residents seem to believe that it is. Troy Skate Park is a living testament to this. Three, open and public location. The safest place for a skate park to be is in an open area that is frequented and in plain view of the public. This is a deterrent for crimes such as littering, vandalism, drug alcohol use, and the operation of motor vehicles inside the skate park. I've seen other towns put their skate parks in isolated areas, and they become havens for such crimes. These crimes often get blamed on those who only visit the park for its intended purpose. Browning is one such example, where somebody decided to drive their car through the skate park and cause several thousand dollars in damage. Just one example of me. Both of our proposed locations, both Lee Garing Field and Fireman's Park, both fit all of these criteria and have more than enough space for a realistic size expansion for the population of Libby. We went and measured the Fireman's Park area. Although what we're proposing is very much smaller than that, it has potential for an expansion of fifty by one hundred feet before being limited by the water lines. This ramp will be a great addition to a park and an investment for the community. It is a project worthy of a good home. I ask that you please give it one. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
My name is Ben Montgomery, four seventeen Terrace View Road here in Libby. I understand that the concerns that people have of not feeling like they're informed and having not been a part of that isn't, isn't fair to say that these things haven't been thought through or haven't been looked at. I do want to clarify and make sure everybody's on the same page. My, myself and everybody else here has used the term skate park interchangeably with what we're proposing here. So, you know, for community members, you know, the, the park that we're proposing is, is not a skate park. Or what we're proposing is a park feature similar to the splash pad, similar to the climbing loop, similar to the fire truck that's already down there. It's not a skate park at this point. It's not what we're asking for. And so a skate park, just to clarify for those that don't know, is a large area where there's multiple things. There's ramps, there's rails, there's stairs, there's boxes. You can have multiple people using it at the same time. What we're asking for is, is a small half-pipe, which is basically of single use. It's one person at a time, like a slide would be, like a swing would be. One person's using it, other people standing back, take turns rotating. So this is, this is not a skate park. And, and I just want to clarify that. So when you're voting on this, this is not, you're not, you're not voting for a skate park yet. We're, we're talking about adding one feature to the park that's already there that's full of other features. So, you know, I went down to the skate park myself and measured the splash pad, the fire truck footprint, the climbing web footprint as far as what that space is taking up. The splash pad is almost two thousand square feet. The, the climbing web is six hundred and twenty square feet. The fire truck is six hundred and forty-eight square feet. What we're asking for is four hundred and sixty-eight square feet. And so while my, the hope would be that we'll see use from this, this can go forward and because the community could, could benefit from it, we'll see expanse to a full skate park in years to come. That's not what this is. That's not what we're talking about. So I hope as we look at that, this could stop here. This could be approved and be one more feature, just like a splash pad. Just because we got a splash pad, that's me working in a water park. You know, it's, they're different things. I, I just want to clarify that so that community members or yourselves, so there's no confusion as to what this is. So thank you for your time.
Mr. Patricia? I, sorry, you're hiding over there and I can barely see you, so.
Tony Patricia, five five nine Florence Road. And my comments, I was down there when we walked down the original site at this Lee Garing Field. And the committee went through a lot of details and looked at a lot of designs and drawings. There's a discussion about ownership and maintenance and responsibilities and lighting. I just want to say, a bunch of old curmudgeons we got here. Here's somebody comes up with a good idea, could help the community grow a little bit and have some fun outside. And it's too hard to get by. So just approve it and let's move on. Thanks.
Any other public comments? I'm sorry. Okay.
Please call, five seventeen Montana Avenue, and what he says.
Mr. Orr?
DC Orr, eleven seventeen Nevada Avenue. Have a lot of history with this. I helped to build the original skate park. And I also worked for the Building Trades Program out at the college that built those houses that displaced that skate park. Thus, I was also the one who demolished the old skate park. At the time, there was a lot of public outcry. And the city council assured the people who stood up like these people have that they had fifteen thousand dollars for that project and they would make sure that the project got done in another place. They had used the property to build a house with the Building Trades Program, and they sold the house and made money. And the fifteen thousand dollars was kept in an account somewhere to, to help with the new skate park. Now, I've been here twenty-six years, attending meetings faithfully. This has come up numerous times. And city council always puts a roadblock in front of it. And the funding seems to have been lost. Weird, huh? I, I would urge you guys to do the right thing for the youth of this town. Allow this project to move ahead and maybe come up with fifteen thousand dollars to help. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Other public comments regarding the skate park? Skate park element, skate element? Any other public comments? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the council table. If, are there any questions or comments from the council? Then all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. I guess we will have the skate park element in Fireman's Park. Okay, that brings us to our next item on the agenda. And that's a, a request from Dave Blackburn about, and Cootney Angler, about renting space down next to the Legion Field. I'm going to get everybody a minute to exit. Okay, Mr. Blackburn approached me just before Christmas about this request. I put it on the item, the item on the agenda for discussion only tonight for the simple reason we've not had any discussion about renting any of our outdoor spaces. We've never talked about parameters, costs, or any of that kind of stuff. So Mr. Blackburn gets to be their guinea pig of that. You have his request in front of you. And he is aware that that area had some vandalism over the weekend. So would you like to come to the podium and, and express your...
Well, Dave Blackburn, one three five four six Highway thirty-seven. For ten years, from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and six, we had a fly shop at one fifteen West Second Street. Rent kept going up. I make money for five months out of the summer. And it forced us to move out of there. And we put a shop up at Riverbend Restaurant, which is okay. We put a shop up at River Bend Restaurant, which is okay, but it doesn't see the traffic flow that I feel that we would benefit from, from being in, in Libby again. And I've been looking around for different places, um, that would have enough, uh, area for drift boat parking and that type of thing. And, uh, what I came up with was just a seasonal, mid-May to mid-October, like a twelve by twenty-four, uh, mini shop on a trailer. And I would park it there from, uh, you know, close, there's actually, moving on to the location, uh, the two locations that I talked about were, uh, by the outfield fence, uh, Kitty Corner to what used to be Marshes, that's now Diane's, uh, across from the VFW. It's a place where people park their cars when they want to sell them, or they're going to work, or something like that. Really hasn't, um, been used for much other than that. And the other spot, that, that's my first location. The other spot would be down, uh, closer to the pavilion, in the, in the gravel area that's across from the grass between there and the railroad tracks. Uh, and so, those are two locations. The second one would definitely need signing up on the highway. And, uh, so, do you have any questions about that?
Well, a lot of folks on council, uh, right now probably don't remember, but we designed a park plan for this park almost fifteen years ago now.
At least.
Um, and this location was exactly what we envisioned for recreational-type businesses to locate. It was not, um, it was not designed to the same park standard that's across the street. So, it was left as sort of this opportunity, uh, either for building for these types of uses, um, or, or something. And we never fleshed that piece of the river park plan out, but, um, I a hundred percent support this. I think it falls right in line with our recreational goals. Um, it certainly, you know, it's a little bit of income for the city. It's not a permanent building at this point, but maybe with your investment, then some others will follow suit, and, and a better structure can be placed there.
So, you're, you're, but you're talking inside the, the second location, inside the park?
The second location, inside the park.
Okay. Uh, any other comments?
I have one.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Blackburn, do you not think that the second location could be just as beneficial or better if you were in that parking lot where so many people are loading and unloading? With that kind of?
With proper signing, with proper signing, it would be. But, you know, to be right there off the highway, there's an access, there's, there's curb access right into that spot.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but, you know, I know there's ballgames, and maybe you don't want that congestion there. But, yeah, I'd, I'd be interested in both locations, but, you know, the main one would be, you know, you would, you wouldn't have to pull down the ramp and, uh, look for it that way. But with proper signs, I think it would work.
Yes. I just wanted to ask your opinion on that, you know? I figured you've tried to?
Yep.
Take all this into?
The other, the other thing was, is I think I can get a temporary power source, uh, in the first location, but, uh, I think the second location, there's no way I could get power in there unless, I know there's a water line, I think according to what Mayor Williams told me.
Uh, there's water behind the search and rescue building. Uh, I'm not exactly sure how it would fit with.
Would have to go, yeah. I just, it would be nice to have power. I mean, I could do something with solar to, to run a cash register and that type of thing, so.
Well, maybe that's something the city could explore and, um, potentially lead to further development of that area. I would, I'd much prefer it in the park, in that space than, I think the, I think the location next to Legion Field would create a lot of issues, traffic-wise.
Okay. Uh, I am going to point out one thing, and I did have another conversation with the Mark, Farmers Market today, and they are closer to moving, ma, moving toward a request to use, uh, space in Fireman, in Riverfront Park, uh, which could include a lot of parking in, in that area, uh, Riverfront Park. So, we'd have to figure out how to juggle the two.
I know I talked to?
On Thursday's, yes.
I talked to Bonnie Gillen, um, who, they have Houdal Farms on, they lease the property from us up there. And, uh, you know, it's on Thursdays, and, you know, they're talking about using the overflow parking where the guys park all their trucks and trailers and all that. And, you know, a busy summer day, it's pretty filled, but what I told her was that on Thursdays, we could just park, you know, over in the gravel somewhere, you know? And that, that wouldn't be a problem, I don't think. I don't think any of the officers would have a problem with that.
So, I'm hearing basically that the council is open, very open and venerable to this request?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay? And with figuring out how to make the location work, uh, I don't know what the signage would need to look like. Uh, that might be something we need to talk about.
Right, right.
Like how to juggle?
I think, you know, my signs are, you've seen them around town. They're fairly small. They're like, uh, four by eight, uh, maybe six by eight. Just something that would point people down to my business.
Plus, the, the, just the sheer, the sheer visual of a building in that location will draw people's eye, and you can use the side of the building for additional signage, too.
And it's a very attractive little building. I thought the exterior?
Well, it's gonna be something like that. I just grabbed something to show. It's gonna be a modest look.
Okay. I, I vote for this one.
I expect a little better than this.
I'll put long sign.
I thought it was, I thought it was a nice picture.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or comments, uh, before, in helping move forward, in the direction of how to write this?
Yeah, I'm in favor of down at, uh, Riverfront Park there. For years, there's been discussion on how that piece was going to be used. I think at one time it was going to be camping, and this was discussed.
No, no.
Uh, no, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
They're friends.
Okay. Uh, any public comment on Mr. Blackburn's proposal? Any public comment? Public comment? Then we would move on to the next item on the agenda, which was my, uh, request for, uh, for approval to, uh, submit the Department of Commerce's grant for, um, assist, technical assistant grant for Mineral Avenue. Um, the Department of Commerce is, um, has some money that they're trying to distribute across the state. Uh, I talked to Gus Byron of, uh, Department of Commerce, and he, they have hired, um, I think he said, six to eight consultants, planners, who they were, are, will, um, send out to locations across the state and help them, um, create a downtown plan, uh, using all the, uh, data that has been accumulated, the earlier efforts, any information, identifying key, uh, stakeholders, and creating a plan, a negotiated plan. Uh, they're also trying to, in a, in addition to this, they're trying to find additional funding for help for impl, implent, implementation. Um, so, it sounds like a really great opportunity. Uh, I know that the, um, we have that revitalization plan, and, um, the first two blocks are kind of, of Mineral Avenue are a result of that. And even if we, um, only get sidewalks and streetlights, decorative streetlights and stuff, we, uh, downtown would look better. So, I'm hoping to get that request in.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the mayor to apply for the, um, Department of Commerce.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments regarding?
Sorry, you're done.
Any questions or comments?
Is there any expense to the city? Is it a match or?
There's no match. No. Not in this particular one. There might be a match in the implementation money, but not in the, in the technical assistance. Any other comments? Any public comments? Any public comments? Any public comments? Okay, um, then all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Uh, I will work with Grant, uh, with Gus to get that, uh, yeah, submitted. Which brings us to the alcohol license applications of Cabinet View Country Club and Heaven's Peaks Organic Market.
Make a motion, we approve all alcohol license applications received to date?
Second.
Okay. Uh, any questions about those? Any public comments? Any public comments for these alcohol license? Public comments? Uh, then all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion carries. Those permits are approved. Uh, all claims received to date?
Make a motion, we approve all claims received to date?
Second.
Did everyone get a ca, a chance to look at the claims? Okay. So, uh, any questions on any of them? So, a public comment on the claims? Public comment on the claims? Public comment? So, all in favor of the motion to approve the claims?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Those claims are approved. Brings us to business license applications received to date. Uh, the Four Bs Libby LLC, Midtown Builders LLC, and the Pinnacle Designers LLC.
Make a motion, we approve all business license applications received to date?
Second.
Any questions on any of those applications?
This Four Bs, a change of ownership?
Yes, a change of ownership, yes. It's moving to actual, uh, local ownership. Okay? Any, uh, other comments or questions? Then any public comments on those building, on those business license applications? Public comments? Any public comments? Then all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to unfinished business, the Libby Development Fund Policy. Um, Ms. Berger was going to work on that. Did you make any progress? It's okay if you didn't, because we've had Christmas and New Years and a lot of distractions.
Um, well, I have ideas.
Okay.
And I thought we were all going to bring ideas, but.
Do you actually?
I dare you my ideas.
I don't know what's happening.
Okay.
I would just like to see us move forward, um, and get some solid plans on a couple of things, just, and some money on.
Okay. Any other council comments? Uh, okay. I'll leave it for another day if no one else has any comments. Uh, okay, but general comments from the council. Uh, I have a couple of things. Does anyone else have anything before I start on my list?
I do.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if we need to make a motion or how we need to do this, but I do think it's imperative that the study commission has, you know, placement on the agenda.
Has anybody opposed that?
No.
Okay. So, we'll, uh, do that. Anything else?
Thank you, guys, for voting for the skate mini-ramp.
Okay.
Not skate park.
The, um, the government study committee appointment, as well as the planning board, as I'm updating some planning board appointments, uh, are for the next agenda. Problem with that was that, that, uh, I, I just got bogged down with Christmas and, and that kind of stuff, and, um, there was advertising had gone, had gone out. Mr. Beebe's application was submitted after the deadline of the first round of advertising, and the second round was already out before he submitted his application. So, um, that was, um, that's one item, and, um, I sent out the, the information about rea, reimagining rural. Did anybody look at that? Have any ideas that there would be interest in bringing it to Libby? Had a deadline to the thirteenth. Did anybody see it?
I did. I looked at it.
Okay.
And, uh, I think I gave you a call. Can't remember exactly.
Uh, you said you thought it was a good idea.
Yes, I did think it was a good idea.
Okay. Did anybody else form an idea?
Very briefly.
Okay.
So, is it similar to, like, the Dream and Do It?
I think it's, I, I printed that out. Uh, yes, it, um, they did a lot of, um, a lot of these around the east side back in the fall, um, in, in very rural communities. And, um, I think the flyer pretty much sums it up. Uh, the one key piece we'd have to identify, and it has to be identified before you can submit an application, is the community coordinator. And they stress how important that person is, and how skilled they need to be. And I don't, off the top of my head, I just did, nothing popped out, nobody popped out to, to fill that role. Okay? So.
Would the community coordinator job, would that also fit in with like a grant writer type of situation?
Uh, it says the coordinator needs to be someone who has the skills, ability, and community credibility to gather a variety of community members together, can speak in front of a group of people, is organized and responsible enough to ensure the serious tasks are completed in a timely manner, and is willing, willing to lead group discussions.
So, I'm kind of trying to?
The coordinator's responsibilities include promoting the event to create local awareness, securing a public handicap accessible location, um, ensuring technology works, prepare and provide handouts and materials, ensure participants complete registration and section evaluations, and leading and facilitating the local discussion. Uh, take, I go back and check out the email. Uh, I'll just read one more thing, and that was "Reimagining Rural is grounded in the belief that our small towns are vital to Montana's vibrant culture, and even more so are the folks who call their places home. Uh, with all their charm, assets, and treasures, these towns struggle to muster up their cap, capacities to successfully navigate challenges. It's crucial that collectively we strive to equip our rural Montanans with the knowledge, skills, and resources needed to sustain small communities." Okay? So, go back and check out your email. Let me know in the next couple of days if you have any interest in, in this.
Well, I, I almost don't think that applies to us.
Okay.
At this point, we, I, I just, the influx of people in this community and, uh, the level of activity, I don't think we're struggling like the towns on the east side are with identity. We have had so much rebound in the last ten years. Anyway, that's not us. We got a lot going on to try and get that together in the next seven days.
Yeah.
So.
That was the thing I was worried about reading through. That was the, who are you gonna pick? Who are you gonna find and get it all done? It was like, good.
Okay. So, is that pretty much a no then?
Can I ask about the first thing you said about the, um? No, 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 about?
The coordinator?
Not about that, um?
Oh.
Um, the study commission.
Oh.
You said you, that it had closed, and then you had to run another?
The first one closed on the tw, the advertisement closed on the twelfth.
So, do we have to wait for the second one to close?
Second one?
Before we can?
It, it has closed at this point. Well, it was out, it's actually was listed at that point as open till closed. And so, I can, can consider.
I was just wondering, like, how, like, like, you asked if we could do Mr. Beebe?
Okay.
And?
But it will have to wait.
You said he missed the applicant, the application deadline?
He, it missed, he missed the first application deadline.
Okay.
So, I would assume him as part of the second advertisement.
Okay. And so, then, and that is closed, too, now?
I think you can probably consider it closed.
Okay.
I think it, the second one ran, I'm not sure when.
Okay. I was just wondering if there was, like, some kind of limitation, or if we were waiting for more people, or, I don't know.
Always looking for people.
There must be one in the door.
Yeah, I know.
So, so, but it is on the next agenda?
Okay.
So, okay? Uh, any other comments? Things to discuss? Okay.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nobody was paying attention.
Want to say?
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.